In 2018, Paulding County held the first annual Paulding Rides for Wishes bicycle ride to benefit Make-A-Wish Georgia. Through the generosity of participants and sponsors like you, we were able to donate $13,000 to Make-A-Wish Georgia. This allowed one wish to be granted to a young lady from Paulding County. Her name is Sienna. We're gearing up for our second annual Paulding Rides for Wishes event September 14th. This event is for riders of all ages and levels. Riders will gather at Veterans Park at Watson Government Complex, then proceed with help from local law enforcement to the Tara Drummond Trailhead on the Silver Comet Trail. The ride will go west up to 11 miles to the county line, making a round trip approximately 22 miles. However, you choose the distance you would like to ride. You're welcome to turn around at any point and return to Veterans Park. We would love to have you as a participant or partner with us as a sponsor this year. There are four sponsorship levels available: Bronze, Silver, Gold, and Platinum. Each with its own benefit to you, but all benefit the children awaiting life-changing wishes. Our goal is to provide funds to grant at least two wishes this year. Make-A-Wish Georgia has agreed to use funds raised to grant wishes to children in Paulding County. We currently have 21 children in our county waiting for wishes. We sincerely hope you will consider joining us for this event as we help provide life-changing wishes to children battling critical illnesses.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome. This time I'll call the Board of Commissioners' Work Session of September the 10th, 2019, to order. And Brian, if you would bring the list of persons wishing to speak. If you have a cellphone, be a good time to silence it. And as you know, tomorrow represents the 18th anniversary of 9/11. One of those significant days in the history of the United States, kind of like Pearl Harbor that we don't want to ever forget. And so, to start out this morning, we're going to show a little clip from last year's recognition of 9/11.
The 9/11 ceremony went good this year, as it normally does. It's led by our honored guards with Paulding County Fire and Paulding County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Gravett with the Sheriff's Office led the way this year. We've been doing this for approximately 12 years now, and we do it every year, rain or shine. We did, last year, we missed last year due to hurricane weather. That was the first year that we'd missed in quite some time. We enjoyed the public coming out and supporting us, the firemen and the police officers, the retired Shields of New York City. And the airlines had representation with us today, and it was a great event for the community and to remember our fallen brothers and sisters and our young men and women that are continuing the fight to keep our country safe and to keep us all free. And we've had a blessed morning.
At this time, we're very pleased and honored to have Pastor Wayne Strickland from Bethany Christian Church follow that. Pastor Wayne, and also to lead us in our invocation, thank you so much for being here. Stand if you're able.
Let's pray. God, I come to you this morning, God, I just want to thank you for your love, God, for your care for us. God, I want to thank you for the freedom that we have in this nation. Sometimes going through our day-to-day life, we forget that freedom and we forget the freedoms that we have that we got from you. God, and I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for the soldiers that are still in other places throughout the world protecting us, those that are here protecting us. God, I want to thank you for the country that we live in, in the state of Georgia and Paulding County. God, I thank you for the people that are here. Thank you for the men and women that are in this room right now, God, for the abilities that you've given them and the care that you've given them and the love that you've given them and the concern for our community that you've given them, God. And I just thank you for them, for their willingness to serve each other, for their willingness to serve the people in this county, God. I pray that you would be with their families, God, that you would bless them, that you would pour out your blessings on them and give them health. God, I thank you for the leaders of this county and for the commissioners that are here and, God, for the men and women that just pour themselves out every day for others. God, I thank you for the decisions that they make, and I pray that you would help guide us in the decisions that we make. God, sometimes we ask that you would be here with us, but we know that you are here with us. And I pray that we would feel your presence in our daily lives. Sometimes, God, we ask for you to lead us and guide us and direct us, but you are leading us and you do guide us and you direct us. And, God, I just thank you for your presence. And, God, there are times when we ask that you bless the things that we're doing, but, God, I know that we just want to do the things that you're blessing, and I thank you for that. God, I thank you for everyone here, in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Strickland. We greatly appreciate you being here. A beautiful prayer. Minutes from the August 13th, 2019, the public hearing minutes, and the August 27th, 2019, work session minutes, and the August 27th, 2019, board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, just to underscore the 9/11 ceremony, that'll be tomorrow morning at Mount Tabor Park at 9:40, if you're interested in attending that, what you just observed. And now, we're going to kind of kick off our census with a positively Paulding segment on some of the hard work that's already been done by the team that's working on this.
We're here at Paulding Meadows Arts and Crafts Festival to kick off the Census 2020 campaign in Paulding County. In March, postcards will be mailed with instructions to complete the survey online or over the April 1st is Census Day. If you do not have your results in, it's not too late. In May, census workers will begin visiting addresses that did not complete the census questionnaire and collect information at the door. For more information, you can visit 2020census.gov.
Right. Be counted. Frank Baker, our county administrator, is also going to announce a second annual Ride for Wishes, and I'll turn it over to you, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second annual Ride for Wishes is going to be this Saturday. It's not too late to sign up to ride or to sponsor. If you go to our main website, paulding.gov, or you can go to active.com, either of those two websites, if you're interested. But this does benefit the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Georgia. And two really important things that I want to be able to make sure that we pass on to the community today is that all of the wishes that are granted will be granted for children that are on the list from Paulding County. And secondly, all the proceeds, 100% of the proceeds, will be going to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So, we're really pleased with that. So, come out and join us. If you're not a rider, if you just want to come out and help with the event, we'd appreciate it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun last year. Great t-shirts. The planning and zoning meeting for this month will coincide with the same day that we'll have our next Board of Commissioners' meeting, which is next Thursday, nine days from now, on the 19th of September at 2:00 p.m. So, if you're interested in the planning and zoning meeting and don't want to miss that, 2:00, the 19th. We have no invited guests under bid awards. Number one is to award the Smart Net Maintenance Contract, the Smart Net Maintenance Contract, to Corus 360 in the amount of $50,444.88. And Ms. Tabitha Pollard is going to tell us about that.
Good morning. This is a renewal contract that we have for some of the switches and hardware within the IT department, and we, it decreases every year. This reduction's about $16,000 less than it was last year, and it's as a result of equipment being, the term of life has expired, and we've replaced some of that equipment. And so, this contract will continue to be reduced and replaced with other contracts in the future. So, unless you have any questions, I think Will's here.
Any questions? Thank you, Tabitha. And you've also got the next one. Number two is award the ITS Extension Project Phase 1 and Phase 2 to the lowest responsive bidder, Brooks, Berry, Haney, and Associates, in the amount of $3,322,061.63. It looks like we have Mr. Jones and Ms. Pollard.
Yeah, this one's not quite as simple. Quite a bit larger. This project, we had three participants to bid, and we are recommending award to the lowest bidder, so for that, George.
Morning.
Good morning.
Try to work this computer. I guessed the password and it worked. I want to discuss a little more on this ITS expansion. It's kind of a project we've been working on for a very long time in the DOT, at least 10 years in the planning phase. Essentially, the project entails tying on to, basically tying on to existing fiber optic cable that we have, you know, out on the corridors, and installing new fiber optic cable, installing closed-circuit television, cameras at intersections, and all the associated equipment to bring images and data back to a traffic control center, which will be located at our Traffic Operations Building at 329 Industrial Way North. We're doing this basically in an effort to improve traffic, you know, conditions on existing roadways, basically trying to reduce delays, reduce emissions, basically just trying to make flow better. We don't, we just don't have the funding available to widen roadways and build intersections to improve traffic conditions. But however using technology, we can use equipment like this in an effort to reduce, like I said, the delays, reduce emissions. We received a grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission at a call for projects in December 2013 under the Congestion Management Air Quality Program, CMAC acronym. CMAC funding is designed to reduce congestion and improve air quality for areas that do not meet the quality standards set by the federal government. The grant process was very competitive at the time, and I believe only 30% of the requested projects were funded. Luckily, we were one of those projects that were funded. Since that time, we've basically gone through the process with GDOT and developed plans for that. You know, traffic signals are basically computers. They receive information from detectors and sensors, and basically it lets it know which phase to give time to. You know, ITS can help with this by ensuring that controllers and detectors are working correctly as programmed. You know, in my opinion, there's nothing worse than sitting at a traffic signal and you're just waiting there and you see nobody on the side street, basically sitting there for phantom traffic. When equipment isn't working the way it should, that's wastefulness, and we can use ITS devices that let us know when these events are happening and hopefully get out and fix and diagnose these problems and make traffic flow as good as it can. You know, these alarms and communications will be set to communicate with our traffic control center that is being constructed at 329 Industrial Way North. Go through here. This is a rendering of the traffic control center that we're going to be building. You know, the TCC will be the central hub for the ITS system. You know, however, our technicians will be able to remotely access this information and alarms using cellphones, using tablets, using computers, so we won't be simply tied to this particular location. We'll be able to, hopefully, be able to do a lot of this work, you know, from wherever we are. The project will install roughly 22 miles of fiber optic cable and tie into 52 existing traffic signals in the county. As this is federal funding, we'll have oversight from the Georgia Department of Transportation throughout this whole process. The intersections and system will also be tied into the GDOT Navigator system, so that will be sent down to their TMC in Atlanta. Cobb County graciously allowed us to use their fiber optic lines to access the TMC, so we're very appreciative of that. So, this project has an 18-month completion timeline, and when complete, you know, I hope everybody will see the benefits of this project. The total bid, like Tabitha said, from Brooks, Berry, Haney, was $3,322,061.63. The majority of the funding would come, of the funding of the project would come from the CMAC program, 80%, and the county has a 20% match, which is estimated at $664,412.33. We've worked with Brooks, Berry, Haney on different projects in the past, most recently a traffic signal at the intersection of Harmony Grove and Bob Grogan. Very happy with their work. That's pretty much all I have. I won't make it a Scott Green-level dissertation, but hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Is there a Phase 3?
Eventually, there could be a Phase 3, yes, sir. Originally, we broke this up into two phases because, at the time, the Traffic Ops Manager was given direction from the Atlanta Regional Commission that it was a very competitive process, and you might have a better chance of breaking this project up into different phases to actually receive funding. So, that was why it was broken up into two phases. It could have been put together as one project. It originally was designed that way. Originally, it was designed that way.
I had the opportunity about a year ago in downtown Atlanta to ride in a Tellis, a driverless car, and I was in the passenger seat. There was a driver, just to kind of monitor, but they have all the signals up on the traffic signals, or all the technology. And I was wondering if this would lead in Paulding County to an easier transition into driverless vehicles.
In theory, yes. I mean, all this stuff can be used to that. Obviously, I don't, that's not really my area of expertise, the driverless cars. I actually did see a driverless car on 278 Rockmart Highway a few months back, so that was pretty interesting, just driving around. I'm like, there's nobody in that car. And I actually stopped a half mile down the road and pulled off, and as it was coming, just made sure, yeah, there's nobody in that car. So...
Is there, what's the operational cost of this?
Per year? Yeah, again, I think you're looking somewhere as around a 5, 5% per year.
Was that car driving better than Chuck?
Don't put me on the spot, Brian. But again, you know, fiber optic cable is very durable. It's, as long as you're not bending it and twisting it and breaking it, you're gonna be fine. It'll last a very long time. It's not like electrical mechanical parts, they, you know, as long as nobody, like I said, nobody digging it, we're all right. I mean, the certain equipment, like, you know, transponders and switches, they have a lifespan. But again, things like that are generally coming down in price, you know, with the technology. So, I think this is something that we can go forward with and feel comfortable with the future costs.
I think Mr. Green thinks you've left something out.
Shocking.
I noticed the agenda was a little light today, so I thought we could add about 10 or 15 minutes of filler, but no, seriously, I just want to let you know that we won this grant because of George's efforts. I remember when he was the Traffic Operations Director at the time, he went after it. We sometimes have our doubts whether it's worth the time to go after grants, especially when there's so little money and so many people applying for them. He put together a winning package, working with staff as well, to get us this grant. So, we've got a couple million plus coming to us because of his efforts. And so, I want to give him, do credit for that. Also, you know, this is an efficiency project. Yes, we will probably need a staff, a member from DOT to staff this center from time to time. But it will also be accessible remotely, as George mentioned. Unfortunately, that means you can get an alert, or you can do something to a signal while you're sitting on your couch at home on the weekend. So, technology has a two-edged sword sometimes. You can't get away from your smartphone, and everybody knows you, they can reach you, and they expect an answer right away. So, yes, we will be able to respond quicker. That will potentially pay for the time that we have to staff this center as well. It will reduce trips and make us more efficient. But all in all, IT and traffic operations initiatives like this are the biggest bang for the buck compared to just widening. So, most of our problems are at intersections, and this is directed directly at improving intersection flow. So, I'm really excited about this project. It has been a long, a long time in the works, but there's a lot of hoops and hurdles to get this funding. So, I appreciate George and his staff for carrying it to this point. So, good day for them, and thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, this has been really a total DOT project, you know, our Traffic Operations Division, but also our Engineering and Engineering Division Manager Kathy Stahler managed this process, getting it from the start all the way through preliminary plans. It was definitely a long, involved process, so they really deserve recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
We have no reports today from committees and departments. We have no one who's signed up to speak on agenda items. Under the consent agenda items, we have one, and that is the appointment of Mr. Tom Morris to the Industrial Building Authority to fill the unexpired term of Robert Kraus with a term ending December 31st, 2019, and then he'll be on there at the 1st of the year So, I would ask if any of the post-commissioners would like to move that consent agenda item to regular business.
Dave, could you clarify what you just said? I don't know if I heard it wrong. What, what you just said, he'll be on there at the 1st of the year, but the term ends at the December 31st?
The official expiration of the person that Mr. Morris would replace, which is Mr. Kraus, would be December 31st. However, we don't intend to put somebody on the board, or I don't, for three months, so the consent agenda item will be back on the 1st of the year.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, hearing none, we'll leave that as consent agenda item and move on to old business. There's none in new business, just one item today, which is discuss action to adopt the new IGA, Intergovernment Agreement between the Paulding County Airport Authority and Paulding County, Georgia. Additionally, to authorize the chairman to sign and execute the said IGA on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and our county administrator, Mr. Frank Baker, has done a lot of work on this and had many, many discussions. So, I'm gonna just turn it over to Frank for the report of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would kind of reiterate what the chairman has said. We have spent a long time looking at this, the last couple of months, and we've looked at it from several different perspectives. We've looked at it from a staff recommendation to our board, and we've also looked at it jointly with the, with Mr. Tibbetts and his authority. We've had a lot of meetings. Terry's in the room, and he's in the back, and I appreciate Terry working with us on this. But this process started probably in May or so, maybe even before, before that. And we approached it from the perspective of looking at this as a cosponsor part of the equation. And with that, the whole, the whole idea of funding, of looking at it from, what do we need to do as a cosponsor to recommend to this board to fund the airport and to assist them? And so, typically, when you see IGAs, they go out for 10 years or so. Well, when you look at budgets, they only go out a year, maybe two years at the most. So, with this proposed IGA, it's only gonna be in effect for two years, a period of two years. So, we're looking at it from a total perspective of a budget kind of scenario. So, the number that we've come up with is, is based on actual budget numbers that we've worked with Mr. Tibbetts on over the last several months. We've looked at his budget, and so, the amount is $332,000 for the next two years to be paid quarterly, and that's a little bit different before it was paid every six months. So, there is a change in that. But again, I want to stress to everyone that we looked at this from a budget perspective, and this is actual numbers. So, this wasn't just an arbitrary number that we pulled out of the air and said, oh, it's gonna be that, that amount. And I think you can see from a kind of an, even though it's an even number, it's odd to say 332, and, you know, instead of 300 or 320, something like that. So, but it is actually based on, on his budget. And what we're talking about there is that funding is for operational needs of the airport, day-to-day operational needs to help Terry execute the plan day-to-day. There's also a provision in there to take care of payment of legal expenses, and they would be totally different than the actual amount of the 332. The other item that I want to mention that we've worked a long time on, and I want to thank, again, Scott Green, he, he's getting some airplay today. We have worked with Scott and also with Terry and some other folks. As a true cosponsor, we want to be able to assist with our, some of our county departments to help out with airport operations when, when it's needed. So, we worked out something in the IGA that would allow for some assistance from the county, and it will go through Scott as the operations director, and it will be vetted from Scott's point of view. So, those are basically the highlights of the, the proposed IGA that's before you and will be before you this afternoon. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, and also, I know Mr. Tibbetts wouldn't mind if you have some questions from him, but that in a nutshell is what's before you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, I do want to say a couple things. I was thinking about last night, how I wanted to say this, and I'm wired in a way that I see things black and white, and sometimes that's good, and sometimes it's a struggle. So, good, bad, off, on, that's, it's the way I'm wired, and it's the way I see things. One of the, one of the things that got me thinking about running for this seat was when the board voted for this existing IGA. I had a real problem, and I still have a real problem, about giving a county asset to an unelected board to run. The success or failure, but hopefully success, of the airport and what happens out there, that needs to lie on the shoulder of elected people, specifically whoever is sitting in these seats at the time. And so, I actually spoke as a citizen that day and said, this shouldn't be handed off. I still feel that way. My preference ultimately would be for the airport to operate within the county, reporting up through the reporting structure that we have for county departments. Based on some of the pending, pending litigation around that issues at the airport, our attorneys have advised us that taking that approach is not necessarily what's best for the county at this time. I talked a little bit about, at the beginning, just a minute ago, about how I see things black and white, and part of what makes this job difficult for me is when I have to vote for something that I don't like. And, and on the surface, you might think, well, why would you vote for something that you don't like? And, and the answer is, is because it's what's best for the county. We're, as commissioners, we're, we don't get to just come up here and do whatever we want. We're tasked with doing what we see based on our, using our discretion, is what's best for the county. So, while I would like to see the airport function within a department of the county and not be run by the Airport Authority, it's not, based on the legal advice that we've gotten, it's not in the best interest of the county to do that right now. So, that gives the opportunity to address some of the problems with existing IGA and some of the concerns. And as Frank mentioned, a lot of that goes to budget. There are some issues with, issues with the IGA because the existing IGA assumed the pursuit and successful completion of efforts for commercial passenger service. And since the FAA has denied that request, and since we, the airport isn't receiving money from what it assumed it was, the IGA assumed the airport would be receiving money from, the payment schedule in that existing IGA is not sufficient for the operation of the airport. And I've said this before up here, it's not in the best interest of the county for us to not fund the airport. We need it to be successful. We all want it to be successful as, in, in the community, working as a general aviation airport. So, so when we look at, when I look at this IGA, the proposed IGA, I see it as a, not necessarily where I'd like us to be, but a good step in the right direction. And there are some pros that I, that I pulled out of the, pulled out of that, and some of this has been mentioned, but I just want to recap a little bit. The first is budgetary. Under the existing budget, it's not enough money for them to operate the airport, so it creates an issue where we are getting requests for money and for expenditures outside of the budget process. With this being planned on actual budget, we can, we can, we can stop doing that. This also provides us the option to help with capital improvements. It's the option. We don't have to, but the board, but the board can say, yes, we want to, as cosponsors, we want to participate in some capital investment there. But based on what's best for the county, based on money available and budget, we don't, we don't have to do that. So, that option is there. This proposed IGA also protects the county from being obligated financially by the, by the airport, or the airport, excuse me, the Airport Authority. We're protected there. So, if there's extra money that needs to be spent, it has to come here before it can be, before it can be obligated. So, we don't have a situation where we have to spend money because, because of an action that was made by the, by the Airport Authority. One of the things that was, I thought was most important about this, this proposed IGA is the term. Long-term IGA for something like this, I believe, is, is a bad idea. I think that a two-year term is an appropriate budget planning cycle, and whoever is sitting at these seats in two years can come back and review this. My hope is that eventually, we can get to the point where, where it can operate as a, as a department within the county. Maybe that'll be in two years. Maybe it won't, but in two years, we'll be, we'll have the opportunity to revisit that. Frank mentioned this, help from county departments. Airport Authority with limited resources at times can benefit from resources that the county has, and whether that's Terry needs to borrow a truck that George has, or, I don't know, some IT issue that they, they might need help with. Instead of contracting out for somebody, they can make a phone call and say, hey, is, would Will maybe have somebody that could come take a look at this for us? Just to help each other out, because we are on the same team when it comes, when it comes to the airport. So, help from county departments, but it's also to be vetted by the county so that if resources are not available, we can work to find a time when resources are available. And then, a big one for me was transparency. The, the Airport Authority cannot change the operational status of the airport without a public vote from this board, which, I mean, it doesn't say it in there, but essentially, what's that saying is you can't apply for the commercial passions or service without approval from the, from the Board of Commissioners. And some may say, well, yeah, but if you get commissioners to support it, then it can continue on. And that's true. If you get commissioners in place who are willing to start that fight again and start that direction, they, they can reapply for that. The important thing, though, is that, is the transparency piece in there. It has to come here, and it has to be done in open vote. It can't be done with a head nod. It can't be done where it's found out about later. It has to come here. And so, that's an important piece of this. So, I, as much as I, I would like to see it operate as part of the county, there's those reasons why it can't right now. And so, I will, I will be supporting this at the 2:00 meeting, and I do want to say that this took, this has been a lot of discussion and a lot of work from, from Terry, as well as this whole board, and a whole big pile of it from Frank and Jason. I appreciate all the effort to, to take all the input and, and kind of bring it together for what makes sense for how to run the airport, where it is, and what we need to do with it right now and over the next two years. And so, I do appreciate all of that. So, thank you.
Comments?
I would just like to say that we have spent a lot of time on this. People think that we aren't doing anything. Well, we are. We're just taking our time and making sure that it's right. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I hope you do, too.
Yeah, you get about two or three drafts reading into these things. You almost want to wait till it gets to the final one, but, but, but it's kind of cool because it's very subtle changes, and, and the more you dig into it, the more you understand. I can appreciate Ron's comments, too, is, and I think we all are looking at it that way, a way to funnel it, you know, back into the county at some point in time when it's healthy to do so.
I'll make a couple of points of clarification. My background is aviation, aviation career with the military and Eastern Airlines in the state of Georgia. About one-half of airports across the nation, including... Um, about one-half of airports across the nation, including their forty-ninth and fiftieth states, are run by airport authorities, um, and they're usually the, uh, areas that have a greater population around them. You know, we're up to a hundred and seventy thousand people now, almost. Your, your airports that are in areas of lower population, like Cedar Town or Blakely, Georgia, or in more rural areas, are generally, are maintained and operated by, uh, the counties and, and the boards of those counties. Uh, Ron made the comment that it's not an elected board, the Airport Authority's not an elected board. Just for review, the Airport Authority's made up of nine members, three of which, uh, are elected, the mayor of Dallas, the mayor of Hiram, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and then another three, uh, to, to make it six of the nine, uh, are appointed by us. So they are very, you know, strongly vetted as to their aviation business backgrounds, and, uh, again, we're the ones that put them on there, so the Board of Commissioners has very strong influence there, so, um, I just wanted to clarify that. Well, that's the, uh, conclusion of our regular business. We have no one who's signed up for public participation on non-agenda items. We do have an elected official that has joined us after the introductory remarks, which is school board member, Ms. Teresa Lyons, and thank you for being here, Teresa. And we have, uh, no executive session today, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move with you, Jerry.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Caker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? We stand adjourned.